I don't know what the. Depends on what the cost would be, you know, who's going to maintain it, that type of thing. That would be the big.
She's good, yeah, much better. We had a. Yeah, we had a real bad night of it there. Turned out to be RSV, yeah.
Hopefully.
She lost her contagious and it's like three weeks ago or something like that, so, yeah. No, very glad that chapter is over, yeah. We went to the surf urgent care a lot. Yeah, yeah. And every time we go, she was fine, smiling. It's not how she is at home. Yeah, 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 exactly.
I like the.
I'd like to call the Monday, February 10 Kittlebells Board of Commissioners meeting to order. If we would all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Uh, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for a moment of silence. Um, Mayor Winley is unable to attend tonight's meeting due to illness and we wish him all a speedy. We wish him a speedy recovery. And there are a number of illnesses affecting a lot of people across our community from COVID to the flu to RSV to a range of respiratory ailments. As we enter into a moment of silence, please keep everyone who is under the weather and their caregivers in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you. We have an agenda before us.
Your motion agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. We'll now open public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at public comment? No response to public comment. We'll move on to introductions and presentations. We have an update from the Dare County Housing Task Force. Thank you so much for being with us.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Donna Creep and I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Outer Banks Association of Realtors and I'm also the Chair of Dare Community Housing Task Force. I have with me tonight my Vice Chair or my Wingman, Mr. Malcolm Fearing. And Ryan, your planner over there, is also a member of our Dare Community Housing Task Force as well as Mayor Winley. He had texted me earlier that he wouldn't be here because he was feeling under the weather as so many others are, as you said. Again, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm going to speak about our 2024 report that the task force developed and adopted there in December. And I'm going to try to go through this PowerPoint. Michael assures me that I will be able to operate the clicker with no problem. The title of the of the report that we prepared is Housing for Now and Future Generations. And that's what we're hoping to do. See, I've already got it screwed up, Michael, sorry.
I got you.
As I said, the task force adopted the report on December the 16th. It was a unanimous vote. The report presents statistical information and it summarizes all of the research that we did over the last eight or 10 months or so. We had a bunch of presentations from folks, the School of Government and whatnot. And so it was a lot of information. The report doesn't catch all of the information because I didn't want to prepare a 200-page report. I wanted to have something that was realistic that people may actually read. If you haven't read a copy of the report, there is a copy available on the Dare County webpage. Before we get started too much, okay, Michael, let's see what I can do. There we go. Maybe not? Do I?
Just tell Mary.
Okay. There we go. I think I got it now. Casey, I'm going to apologize to you because you've heard this before, so just bear with me.
That's all right. That's all right. I learned a lot.
So before we get started, I do want to talk about the big news from the task force. We had applied to a program that the UNC School of Government is undertaking this year. It's from their Carolina 100 Program. And they've studied a bunch of other issues over the last four years, substance abuse and some other ones. And this year they decided to focus on housing. And so the community task force decided to submit an application. We were actually kind of skeptical that we would even get selected, but we did. It was a pretty aggressive process. We're one of 14 teams that have been selected across the state of North Carolina. The aim, and this is from the press release, aim is to connect communities with the resources and tools needed to assess and make decisions on how to respond to local housing needs. So we're hoping that it that it lives up to the hype, if you will. The first-person meeting is next week in February. We have, it's an 18-month program. We have five in-person meetings. The core team is Mr. Fearing and myself, Andy Garman from the town of Naggs Head and Matt Neal from the town of Southern Shores. We hope that the report that we've prepared will serve as that action plan for that program. The good news is that it's not costing any of the members, organizations on the task force anything. We actually will be getting $10,000 from them to do a pilot project. I'm not sure what that'll be at this point. But there's no no funds involved locally, so that was that's one positive thing of that. Some of the influencing factors that we've learned over the course of the last few months is that the North Carolina Constitution sets the foundation for it on how local governments can spend money on housing. There's also North Carolina general statutes and in some instances, there are special enabling legislation. Dare County actually has some of that special enabling legislation that was used to build the teacher housing here in Kittlebells and in Buxton. Some other factors, geography, clearly the island geography affects how we build here, not just housing, but everything. The presence of public lands. We have a lot of public lands in Dare County, land use regulations, development costs and community attitudes. The report focuses on four components of housing, available housing, attainable housing, sustainable housing and acceptable housing. We need to have a housing inventory that's there for long-term tenure and that it's there in perpetuity for that long-term occupancy. It needs to be attainable for our residents. There's a a metric that's used is that residents shouldn't be spending more than 30% of their household incomes on housing expenses, property, your mortgage expense, your taxes and your insurance or your rent, if you own or depending on whether you rent. Housing also needs to be sustainable, needs to withstand the natural hazards that we have to deal with here in Dare County. And then for those folks that already own a home, you have to be able to sustain that homeownership. As you know, it costs a lot to maintain your home now with the cost of repairs, cost of insurance, cost of insurance will be going up here in June. And then it also has to be an acceptable component there for the housing. It has to be consistent with local zoning and it needs to be consistent with the neighborhood scale and the existing patterns of development. The report presents some statistics. The median home sale price in 2003 was $325,000. In 2024, that jumped up to $622,000. So that's a big, big leap there. From the period of 2003 to 2020, it was a 17% increase, but in that four-year period from 2020 to 2024, it went up 63%. So that's that's a big jump in a matter of four four years. The median household income for Dare County is just below $80,000. And when you apply that 30% metric for your household expenses, that's just shy of $24,000. Some of the information that we've come across indicates that 31% of the households in Dare County are considered cost burden. So they're paying more than that 30% for their household or their housing expenses. Here are just some numbers about the number of housing units that we have in Dare County. We have lots of houses in Dare County. It's not that we don't have houses in Dare County. They're just not all occupied on a year-round basis. For Dare County, there's just shy of 35,000 housing units. 53% of those are listed as vacant. And these numbers are coming from the 2002 American Community Survey. So these numbers are a little bit dated in terms of year, but I'm sure there's not, they haven't increased that much. And they define vacant as homes that aren't occupied on a, you know, on a long-term basis and it specifically lists vacation home or second home in that category. And you'll see that the occupied numbers are 46.7%. When you look at the column there for Kittlebells, your your percentages are just about comparable to the same ones for the county on a year, on the county basis. You have a vacancy rate of 53.5% and 46.5% for the occupied. One of the things that in our conversations, folks always say to me is, Donna, what are you going to do about those Airbnbs? What are you going to do about those short-term rentals? You know, short-term rentals make up a a a almost all of our vacation rentals here in Dare County. And so we have a lot of experience with short-term rentals. But it's been the advent of the online marketing platforms that have allowed folks to to offer their homes in another platform beside your typical property management firms. And they have definitely impacted the long-term rentals and what what was, you know, there were houses that had been previously offered for long-term rental that were that were transitioned to short-term rental. And now what we're seeing is that because of decreased demand, some of those housing houses are transitioning back to long-term rentals. We talked to a couple of property managers who handle the long-term rentals and what the gentleman, what the one of them said to me, and it stuck with me is if it's a short-term rental and it doesn't have sizzle, if it, you know, if it's not waterfront or something like that, then they're they're not seeing the demand. And so they're trying to, they're transitioning back to to long-term rentals. And that's a trend that we think will continue. The other thing that's important to note about about those Airbnbs and those online platforms like that is North Carolina local governments don't have the ability to regulate them uninhibited. There's a case law that involved the city of Wilmington that sets some standards. And then we don't have special legislation to say, offer property tax decrease. We just, we can't do that. And I I hear that all the time. Well, why don't you just, you know, give them a break on their the property taxes? We don't have the authority to do that. So that's the simple answer to that. This is just a chart that breaks down the median home sales price over the course of the years. And again, the two bars there in yellow represent those big jumps in the two years that one year was 21.2%, the other was 23.1% and they've they've gone back down to single digits. This just demonstrates the different geographic median sales prices. And you'll see that there the highest one is duck. Kittlebells is coming in at $594,000 and Collington is coming in at $517,000. So those are the median sales price. And those numbers are coming from reports that I ran from the Outer Banks Association of Realtors. So those are verified sales prices. And then I just wanted to take this chart and I've tried to make, I've been doing this presentation here for the past couple of weeks now. And so I've been trying to make it specific to the local government that we're speaking to. So I've taken the median sales price there for the town of Kittlebells, the 594 applied property taxes, a 1% insurance, assumed a 6% mortgage rate and calculated what the monthly payment would be. And you'll see it's, you know, $4,654. The household income that would be necessary to get that mortgage for that $545,000 house is not quite $200,000. The average median income for the town of Kittlebells is not quite $80,000. And using that $80,000, the home price that that would qualify for is $240,000. So you can see that there's a big gap in between what that sales price is and what the median sales price is. So the median sales price is, is, you know, is 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 including properties on the oceanfront where most folks don't live. So because of that, I wanted to include some recent listing prices there. So I went through and looked at the listings and you'll see, and these are all coming from the west side of Kittlebells. The cheapest one there is right at $415,000. So those are perhaps more realistic of where where the local people would be living or would be looking to buy a house. I also included some monthly rental rates there. You'll see that the cheapest one is $1,400 for a mobile home over in Mann's Harbor. Kittlebells apartment, 400 square feet is running for $1,850. Kittlebells, single-family, three-bedroom, two-bath home, $2,900. I included some salary information here. I took some, I have a first-year teacher salary there. I have some salaries there from the town of Kittlebells webpage. You'll see where those numbers are coming in. I I I felt it was important to include some salary information in the report because what we talk about a lot at our task force and in our subcommittee meetings is that we need to make this issue relatable so that folks know that the housing issue, who it is that has, you know, an issue, finding housing and what salary ranges are those people in? And and we need to make it relatable, if you will. And so I have some some public sector jobs in there, some private sector jobs there. And then at the bottom of the chart, you'll see a number that I pulled from the Chamber webpage, which lists an average weekly wage from the second quarter of 2024 of $845. We talk about housing options and what works and other areas and what may be options for Dare County. One of those is accessory dwelling units. The town of Kittlebells allows accessory dwelling units and has for some time. Duplexes and small-scale multifamily. You guys have duplexes and multifamily in your ordinances and actually just in the past couple of years or in the past 12 months or so, you've applied, you've approved a couple of projects for multifamily construction. Workforce housing at commercial sites. Some of the other local governments have workforce housing regulations that create standards for a commercial unit similar to the accessory dwelling unit. Second-floor occupancies are also an option that works and I know that the town allows that as well. One of the tools that has been identified as helping with that acceptability component is is having deed restrictions that apply to the tenure or maybe a workforce component so that when you have those to ensure that there aren't, they aren't short-term rentals, that they're occupied on a long-term basis, you apply deed restriction there. And I believe that the town uses some of those with their ADUs as well. Looking forward to 2025. One of the, some of the tasks that we're hoping to accomplish this year, we're hoping to to do some more research into the teacher housing and how that legislation that was approved in 2004 can be used to perhaps build some more housing. The legislation talks about three sites, Kittlebells, Hatteras Island and Roanoke Island in the mainland. There's not anything on Roanoke Island in the mainland. So we're hoping to investigate that some more, investigate the establishment of a nonprofit and a perpetual funding source, investigate development of housing on government-owned land and also complete some outreach activities to make that AMI relatable and a couple of other outreach activities that we're hoping to to make the community better understand of what we're trying to do here. We hope that the R-State, our Homes program will be beneficial in implementing some of these tasks. And I just included this slide here just to show a picture of the teacher housing because that has been a success. And we're hoping to capitalize on that. Even the ones down in Buxton, there's 12 units down in Buxton and they're integrated into the neighborhood like the ones here in Kittlebells are. And I think it's important to note that, you know, Kittlebells was very was part of that success with the teacher housing because they waived the the fees back in 2007, 2009, whenever the first phase of that was built. And it's my understanding from speaking with your planning director that you guys have waived the fees, that they decide to do the second phase that they've been talking about as well. So that's that's a significant significant contribution that the town has put forth there. We are hoping to do some outreach. We are participating with the ECU study on workforce housing and community attitudes. They'll be doing some community meetings starting later this month. They're going to do an online survey and some stakeholder interviews. There'll be some outreach components associated with the R-State Home, our our State, our Homes program. And then we have an outreach subcommittee and I'm sure that they'll be developing some some further ideas on how to do that. And I'm going to stop right there and let Mr. Fearing speak for a few minutes. And then if you guys have any questions, you can certainly ask those of either one of us.
I want to point out something. You know, when you pay for nothing, you expect to get nothing, don't you? Now, something that hadn't been said enough is the work that Donna does, probably 20, 30 hours a week on this issue for nothing. The the task force is not funded funded. So it's all volunteer effort. Everything is done in a voluntary effort. If I can, I want to give a little bit of history. And it's brief. In 1985, the county received a carrying capacity study compared by Boons Allen Hamilton. And a quote from it. It appears that, this is 1985. It appears that Dare County has a growing problem with insufficient housing supply for low and moderate-income people living or working in Dare County. It further states, without some corrective action and increasing gap between job demand and available housing is likely to become an impediment impediment for future economic expansion. In 1989, Ms. Creep and I, I don't know if anybody remembers ATCA, which is the Area Development Coordination Agency. Did you remember that? Okay, so there's a few of us that go back that far. I was 34 years old, had hair. Ms. Creep, I believe, was 22 years old and she was a fresh hire out of college. And I'm, I thought it was East Carolina. I think it was East Carolina. That's who's doing the outreach for us. I think that's how they got picked, maybe. So we have been in this issue a long time. It is not new. Chamber Commerce has been in it. 2001, they held a a working group on the beach and it was called Place to Call Home. Back in 87, there was a report done by Dare County Board of Commissioners, and I'm going to read the excerpt from it. Dare County, like other resort coastal communities, has a shortage of low and moderate-income housing. The need for such housing was identified most strongly at a general public meeting on Hatteras Island and was affirmed by several members of the Dare County Board of, the Planning Board. The problem stems in part from the competition for housing between permanent residents and seasonal residents. Some seasonal residents and second homeowners often have higher levels of disposable income available to spend on housing. I think that's true today. At the same time, the tourist-driven service economy of Dare County provides the highest number of jobs and the lower pay scales. There's a need to meet the housing needs of these lower permanent residents. Population, also in that Boons Allen Hamilton study, I think some of us would find this interesting. In 1985, there are about 17,000 people who lived in the entire county. Today, our population in the county is about 38,000 people, which is a little over 21,000 population increase. If you divide that out and average it, that's about 530 people a year or approximately 44 people a month. There was a study done by UNC, so I have to believe it's true, recently. UNC people. That between now and 2030, our population will grow about 4,500 people between now and 2030. The incorporated municipalities, such as yourself, have a combined population of about 19,400 residents. Kittlebells being the largest with somewhere around 7,800. Mania being the largest. I was about to plug in from hometown there. The unincorporated area of the county has a combined population of about 18,000 per the census. So it's closely split between the county and the towns. Donna, in one of her slides, talked about cost burden. That number includes homeownership and rentals, both. And that's important. And I want to talk about that. Based on the population, total combined population of all the municipalities, the 31%, if you apply that, that's somewhere around 6,000 people. That would be cost burden. I'm going to come back to that cost burden place. In the unincorporated area, about 50, about 5,800 people in our county are cost burden. Reported in the 2024 Currituck Dare Community Foundation Needs Assessment, it is reported in that document that about 52% of our rental people and rental properties is unaffordable to them. Now Donna had a slide that gave salaries, a high of 52, a low of 37. For today, I'm going to use the $50,000 number because I can work with that number a lot easier than the others. That equals somewhere around $3,300 a month. Okay? Out of $3,300, if you looked at the prior slides, you're looking at rent or homeownership. I'm going to use a $2,000 number because that's really low. Okay? If you deduct that, you'll end up with about $1,300 worth of disposable income. What do they have to pay? What does that individual have to pay out of the $1,300? Basic needs, food, auto, gas, insurance, cable, internet. Some pay daycare, some pay student debt. I'm going to go through some numbers on 1,300. Food, $10 a meal. I eat more than $10 a meal. That's $30 a day. That's $900 of 13. Gas, say $5 a day in gas. That's $150 a month. Health insurance, minimum of $800, I would say, to to more. Cable TV and internet, $100. Electric, I put $100 down. That didn't include a a charge for a car payment, insurance, daycare or student debt. So that number comes up to $2,150 without those other expenses coming out of a $1,300. So I'm saying this to make it relatable that the people, and and this is a a broad statement for all people of Dare County. In each municipality, in each area, incomes and expenses would be different. I I like to tell the story. Tara, do you have grandchildren?
I do.
Okay. I I got seven. I don't know what.
Wow.
I don't know what happened. But my youngest, and I like to tell this story, is in first grade. Okay? Between the first grade and her graduation and the 12th grade, the county, through state, local dollars and federal dollars, will spend $900 million at current funding, today's funding, on their education. If you reflect back to the numbers that both Donna and myself gave you, there's not much of a future for our constituents. And that's a point I try to make a lot of times without making people mad. The tourism drives our economy. It's essential to our economy. But who do we represent? The constituents. And the constituents need help. We meet tonight, and I tried to mix this up each time as Donna did, make it real, in the shadow of the shadow of one of the greatest events known to man, first flight. You know, Oliver and Wilbur, can you imagine what they thought? Could you think about, well, they didn't have the internet advisors back then, but they had probably some advice, you're gonna fly. Really? You're gonna tackle that? It's never been done. But that flight did occur. They didn't listen to the ones that said it can't be done. They made it happen. This board and past boards, sitting up here, have dealt with many difficult issues. Construction of schools, let me tell you, that was a big deal, y'all have three of the largest schools in the district. Beach nourishment was a big one. Fire and police services for the municipality, as y'all have grown, are big ones. Water distribution, I can remember back then when my dad chaired that, and they're bringing water out of onages, they're still talking about that today. That was a big issue. Your boards and past boards have had great leadership, as many boards in this county have had. We need that leadership today for our next generation of people to replace us, to continue to lead this county. And in closing, and I appreciate not having a light on me, I'm not accustomed to that normally, that they don't give me much time. When you go home, and this would be for everybody in the room, look at your house value. Donna said it was five ninety-four, I'm gonna round it up to six. If you went to finance it today, the down payment would be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and twenty percent down payment. It's unattainable for the majority of the people of our county. I look forward to your leadership in addressing this issue. So as I say each time, if you have questions, Donna will be glad to answer them, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you.
Any questions?
I would, I would defer to staff to find out, you know, some thoughts from them, and of course, the other board members. I think it's, everybody that I've talked to and all the different areas have identified that it's a real need, and it's something that does need to be addressed. We need, we've got a lot of thoughts that we need to get from staff and what their ideas are, and what you guys think.
I have a, I have a specific question, Donna or Malcolm. You know, you were talking about the history, Malcolm, and we had the Community Development Corporation, you know, there's been a lot of, a lot of people who've tied CDP back in. Anyway, Dare Education Foundation is really the only one who is, to my knowledge, successfully maintained and started and has maintained. Was, is there any talk of working with them, and they're doing it successfully now, and if they had more money, I know they would do more?
Yes, ma'am, there is. We've presented the same report to the Board of Education, and Malcolm and I have had meetings with the Board of Education Chair and conversations with them, I wouldn't say necessarily meetings, maybe conversations. There's some transitions going on at the Dare Education Foundation, and once they get their new director in place, we're hoping to sit down with them. I interviewed the chairman of the Board of Education just the other day for some work for the R State, our homes program, and I asked him that specifically, when do you want to sit down and talk about this? So we are, and we're very focused on that because we have that special enabling legislation, and so it's there in place. We hope to be able to pursue that as far as we can. It contemplates a third site on Roanoke Island, so we would like to do that. We hope that the other phases that they proposed here in Kill Devil Hills have come to fruition. It's mentioned three or four different times in the report because we recognize the success of that, and it's, it's the low-hanging fruit, if you will, and so it's easily attainable. I don't want to say it's easily attainable, but it's there, everything's, yes, everything's in place for it, and I think that, I think the more we've talked about this, the viability of that oh-four legislation is, we need to work on that because it includes, you know, a statement in there that says the units can be below market or at market, and that's all that it says, and so, you know, how far can we push that? Because I think the more we go and the more research we do, we realize that our focus is narrowing down to that moderate price income range that we have, that missing middle is the term that you use a lot of, or hear a lot of times. And so I think that that's one of the things that we're hoping to get researched when we meet with the folks there at the UNC School of Government, and so, but yes, you're on mark, that's exactly what we're thinking as well.
Great, great. And I love the pointing out the, I know the only housing task force meeting I was able to go to, one of my feedback was, let's have a toolkit of that what municipalities can do in terms of policy, and, you know, are deed restricting a piece of property in the last year, I think it speaks, have any other towns?
Right, well, um.
Moved towards some things like that?
Yes, yes, and I want to hit on two things when you say that. The report actually includes a matrix that lists all of the options that all of the local governments in Dare County do. The town of Nags Head recently adopted multifamily standards that includes an occupancy requirement as well as a workforce requirement, and so I think that that's worthy of consideration for some of the other towns that may want to, you know, do similar things or consider similar things because that helps combat that fear that everybody has, is, oh, well, if you build it, it's just gonna be occupied, it's just gonna be used for short-term loans, okay? Well, if you have a deed restriction that says it has to be long-term, and even that you have to work there, that seems to help that. Now, the enforceability of that is, you know, and Nags Head recognized that because they don't, we don't, nobody really knows because there haven't, hasn't been one built, but they do that in other areas. Well, I think Asheville has some of those requirements, and I know that some of the other states out west have that.
Boone does too, yeah, I know, what Chalk County does.
Yeah, the teacher housing does, right, yeah, but that's, that's specific, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate the presentation, I think you guys are doing great work. I have, I have the real desire that all the towns, you know, do their fair share, that's one thing that I think is important, you know, that the burden not be the burden of solving this problem, not be just on, you know, our town or any one town, that all the towns take ownership in it. Most of the, most of those who are affected by this that own businesses in this town live in Kitty Hawk, Southern Shores, Agzett, so, so, you know, the working, the working, the workforce lives in our town. And when you talk about constituents, constituents of our town, I know our constituents of our town are, and a lot, and a lot of those business owners that work in our town, own businesses in our town, don't live in our town. So anyway, I just like to see all the towns feel like they own this process, you know, and it's just not the largest town's, Kill Devil Hills' job to carry all the weight because it's large and geographical. The other thing that, that I was gonna ask, because I didn't understand it, when you say vacant houses, you're saying vacant, year-round vacant houses on that chart?
Vacant meaning the vacation rentals, that they're not occupied on a long-term basis.
Okay, so they'll, okay. And that, that kind of, I guess that number's hard to hash out, like that which is, you know, large homes that will never be, that would never, ever be, you know, year-round rentals, and those which, you know, could, those that are vacant, so to speak, but, you know, could be year-round rentals, you know, you can't picture a ten-bedroom house being year-round rental, that's just not likely. But, so, so in that vacant piece that you're saying, it'd be nice to know the breakdown of that which is vacant, that would never, ever be used as, you know, a part, you know?
Right, well, that's information that's coming from the Census Bureau, and so, you know, they have a very broad definition, and I, who knows how they calculate that number? You know, certainly you could do a deep dive into the Dare County tax records and do that, but quite honestly, I haven't taken the time to do that, I pulled that number from that. But I do want to address your comment about all of the towns participating in all of the local governments, that the task force has elected officials from all of the towns that come to the meetings and have been very engaged. And I, clearly Kill Devil Hills has zoning that's more conducive to multifamily than some of the other areas, but I think what's been demonstrated by Nags Head with their multifamily ordinance is that they're, they're committed to doing something. Kitty Hawk adopted some workforce accessory standards just this past year, and so they're working toward that. But I, as I tell folks in our task forces, housing is more than building, and so they all have to address it and what their capacity is, and what they feel that works for them. Clearly, what works in duck is not gonna be the same thing as works in unincorporated Dare County, because of the nature of their town, but that doesn't mean that they can't participate in whatever the solution may be. And I think the fact that they've been engaged for the past twelve months and that they're still fully engaged is significant.
Yeah, I think we've already done some things here to challenge the other towns, and to be honest, I don't think they've stepped up, you know, to be honest, to take on those roles, I'm glad they're represented at the meetings, and I'm glad they're interested, but in the end, we'll, and no one's gonna be able to make anybody do anything, but in the end, will the other towns also step up, you know, and do their, do their role? That's, that's my, that's what I worry about.
Right, well, I'm not in any, I'm not in a capacity to force the towns to do anything. We can just feed them the information, but I do think that the fact that they're engaged in the process is significant, and that wasn't something that was occurring two years ago.
True, true, and, but, you know, like, you know, enforcement is always the last final word, and it's always the detail that most people, you know, skim over. But anyway, the other question I had was, you know, I think it's shameful that we lost that money to the state, millions of dollars, and, and I just think it's largely because of being myopic and not using, not using mainland Dare County, you know, and I think, I don't know why that's always being pushed down, pushed down the path, and I, you know, mainland Dare County has plenty of opportunities to, to, to solve some of this problem, and it's just not being done.
I'm gonna disagree with that. When you look at the report, there are, one of the appendix has properties that are publicly-owned properties, there's probably sixteen or eighteen sites identified, and it includes a site on mainland Dare County-owned property, and one of our tasks is, is to further investigate use of government-owned land, and that's not necessarily local government-owned land, so...
Well, maybe I'm not talking about your work, I'm talking about why, you know, maybe some of that money that was being given to us wasn't used for a project on mainland Dare County.
And I can't answer that question, and that's in the past, we're looking forward, not in the, not in the rearview mirror.
I've got a dream for that place.
Oh, yeah?
Called Buffalo City.
Yeah, Buffalo City.
Not the whole Buffalo City, Terry, you know, there's, there were two large communities when we talk about the history, that was Buffalo City and Beachland, and there were two large communities on the mainland, and I hope that history repeats itself.
I agree, I agree.
In long-term planning, that I'll probably go, one way or the other. But long-term planning, I do agree that the mainland is part of that solution long-term. Short-term, I believe there's, to the private sector and the public sector, public sector land, and we talked about that, and during that conversation in Kellogg's, why public land? Average lot, and I'm gonna throw a number out there, I mean, that might not be set, a hundred thousand dollars. House, thousand square foot, two hundred and fifty plus dollars a square foot for the house, okay, you're at three hundred and fifty-some thousand dollars, so if you're trying to develop a rental unit, the math just doesn't work. And so, but if you take that hundred thousand dollar lot, and if it could be in a land trust, but there's not a cost for that lot, if we can figure that out constitutionally, then that changes the equation, okay? So also, and I'm gonna say this, again, I'm getting my tongue pushed up, probably should keep my mouth shut because I think I'm doing pretty good. You take a twenty thousand square foot lot, what can you build on a twenty thousand square foot lot? Fifteen bedrooms, three bedrooms, in some cases? I would argue that that's a multifamily unit because multiple families come in vacation and that. But could you put four one-bedroom units on that twenty thousand square foot lot? So even if that lot cost a hundred thousand dollars, you're going from a hundred to twenty-five thousand. So those are some of the things that we hope to, to push out there to see if that information, not directing any municipality or county, but giving you information to think about as we move this process forward.
And just one more thing, I like how you state it, and it's basically, I think, because in the end, general public needs to sound off on all this, and I like how it's presented in more of a, how will your kids and grandkids live, afford to live here, and everybody, that hits everybody, right? And in, 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 sometimes the workforce housing, I think, I think in that term alone, it kind of lends more to like, oh, this is business owners, like this is a problem that we need to solve for the business owners of the county. It's really, like, when you pitch it more to our constituents, which is what I think is interesting, being government in a town that is funded by out-of-state people, but we represent the problems of the working class here in the town. We do spend a lot of time on the oceanfront, like, an inordinate amount of time on the oceanfront legislating it, talking about it, but really, that's not the problem with most, most people that live in this town. Most people that live in this town have, you know, they may care about how the oceanfront is managed to some extent, but their problems are paying the bills and working. So those are the people that voted for us, and, and, and Kill Devil Hills being, you know, the center of the workforce, probably. So, you know, those are our constituents, and we present it like, hey, do you want your kids to be able to live here, or who is going to run this place when you're gone, you know? So that, you know, pitching it in that direction, and that, I think that hits home more to the, to the people here.
I have one more age group.
Yes.
I ain't saying, but mine. You too, Terry, you're not poor, huh? My mother, I reckon she's okay, she just turned ninety-eight, let her house bother herself. Her social security would not allow her to pay her taxes, and she had a mortgage, but her expenses on the house. There's an aging population that we also need to be thinking about too, when we talk about housing.
They're getting a price right out of their houses, yeah. Yeah, now that's, to me, that hits, hits home more than sometimes when we present it as workforce, it almost looks more like, all right, the businesses are short on workforce, and that's, and that's the pitch, but to me, when you present it that way, it just sells more to the constituents, which is what you spoke to, so, yeah.
I mean, it, it sounds like the, the single largest threat to our future here. I think the idea is the path forward, I believe, and making sure that we're all on board with helping to solve this problem, and I think that we, we all are. I agree with Commissioner Gray that it's kind of between us and staff to come up with ideas on how we can help, I believe, and all my other questions have been addressed. Thank you all for a wonderful presentation.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
This is something that Kill Devil Hills has been open to, you know, trying to address by changing some rules and, you know, working with our zoning. by, uh, changing some rules and, you know, working with our zoning, uh, uh, staff to, to come up with things. Kill Devil Hills has always done that. Kill Devil Hills has never turned down a, uh, a housing project that I'm aware of that has been, uh, identified to help, uh, you know, with, with the housing issue. Kill Devil Hills did have a proposal where it decided it didn't want to sell land that it owned that was intended for something else.
Well, and wasn't, not just that, but wasn't zoned.
Yeah, and it wasn't zoned for that. Uh, so, but, but we turned down, uh, you know, the possibility of selling property that was, uh, intended for something else. Um, so we've always been open, and I've been proud of Kill Devil Hills for doing that. Uh, and, uh, I think it'll continue to be that way. So I think we just need to get with staff and come up with some ideas to, to deal with the issue. But I think we need to get credit for what we've done, too.
Absolutely.
And thank you to Ryan for serving on that, and for John, and for the work that you all are doing, because it's very important.
You got those big, broad shoulders over there.
Anything else on this?
Thank you all very much for the presentation, a lot of work you've done.
Anything for ongoing?
Anything.
Under new business, we have Outer Banks Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan adoption.
Yes, thank you. Um, over the past year, the Dare County and municipalities and Currytuck County have been working together to update the, um, Outer Banks Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is done by a consultant, and it is a voluminous document. If anybody needed to read it, it's 694 pages. Um, so, and it has some incredible information. Um, it goes through all hazards, not just the ones we think of immediately being flood or hurricanes. It goes through cyber attacks. It talks about poisonings. It talks about active shooters. It really takes every hazard you can think of and tries to put that into a plan. This plan is, um, something that we do for, it's a requirement for FEMA to, to be, um, part of their program. If we want assistance from FEMA, we have to have a valid hazard mitigation plan, has to be updated every five years. Um, and it also helps us with our community rating system credits. Um, several, 10, 10 years ago, we did a regional hazard mitigation plan. They included five counties, Donna?
This is a lot.
And, um, they didn't have the same hazards we did, and it, it didn't perform well for our purposes for community rating systems. So when we updated that five years later, we limited, uh, our scope to just Currytuck and Dare County and its municipalities. And it was wildly, uh, reviewed for our CRS. And we got, we went from, I think, 98 points to, in the 180-point range, which is very, very helpful for people to have lower flood insurance here in town. Um, I outlined each section of the, um, plan for, for the board. I will put you closer to section, section six, which is our mitigation strategy specific to the town of Kill Devil Hills, and that's what's attached. And it addresses some of the hazards that we specifically have here in Kill Devil Hills. It also lists some of our infrastructure projects that we want to apply for, for stormwater specifically. Um, Steve and I worked together on getting those in this plan. It will help us in the future getting brick grants and other state funding to help us do these major stormwater projects that are in the millions of dollars. So the mitigation strategies are updated annually. Um, this plan has been reviewed and approved by the, uh, State Emergency Management and has been forwarded to FEMA. Prior to FEMA approving it, they have to have the resolution that's attached to this memorandum adopted, essentially y'all adopting the, he has, the Outer Banks Hazard Mitigation Plan. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Like I said, it's a very, very big, detailed document.
Yeah, it was great to see the layout. I was, I was also very thankful that we live where we live. Very low on a lot of the PR I score on many things, so. Makes me happy to live where we live. Any questions before we?
None here, good work.
Entertain the motion?
I'll make the motion that I, um, move to approve the plan, uh, the resolution adopting the 2025 Outer Banks Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
We'll move on to committee reports.
None here.
Aren't we?
Nothing for me, Mayor Bertin.
Sue, did you want to give for the CRC? Thank you.
Good evening. Sue Kelly, 211 C Village Lane, on behalf of the Community Apairance Commission. Um, most importantly, I think, is trash attack. Sandy Marklin and her committee have done their usual wonderful job with staff. We couldn't pull this off without the, the work of, of the staff of this town. Um, we are set up for Saturday, April the 4th, and rain date will be the next day, Sunday. Um, somebody check me and make sure it's the 4th. That, Saturday might be the 5th.
It's the 5th.
It's the 5th.
Thank you. So nice of you not to correct me immediately after I said it. Um, Saturday the 5th and Sunday the 6th would be the rain date. Um, so that's in the works. That's always a big thing. We're going to continue to gather at Aviation Park. It's safer, really, than Meekins Field, but this has always been a great thing. I know, Terry, back in the day, you all started it, and the Community Apairance Commission is very happy to have taken a back, back, and also to let, you know, and also to let, you know, and also to let the system chief know, um, we have ham biscuits and coffee, and then pizza for folks. So we do feed folks, and people donate this. Mike Kelly will, will get the ham biscuits there for you.
All right.
Um, we also have the poster contest, and, um, I'm sure that you can go online and look and see what the deadline is, but that's open to schoolchildren K through 12.
It's March 7th. The deadline for that is March 7th.
Thank you so much, March 7th. So still plenty of time to do that. Um, the Community Apairance Commission was not able to hold our first meeting of the year because of that snowstorm. So we are scheduled to meet in March, Thursday, the 27th, pretty sure I've got that one right, um, for our next meeting. Um, one thing I would like to say is that this group's now been in existence around 10 or 12 years. Um, we have some new folks, which is very exciting, always new ideas, new faces when they come. We started out with this group that you established just gung ho, and we jumped into a bunch of things, from light poles to banners to flags to floor area ratio, all kinds of stuff. Redoing trash attack, bringing that back. Um, and it was very exciting to see things happen, and there were many things that we were not able to do. Um, now, things, of course, are a little harder to come by ideas. Our purpose for existence is to keep the town as attractive as we can and make it even more so as much as possible. So I think what, what I'm saying is that we would welcome any ideas that people have about, um, things that we could look at as possibilities for the town, things that we can recommend to you as possibilities. Um, would very much appreciate it. Um, we may need to kind of, you know, redefine our purpose for existence, um, but we're willing, I think, to do that. So I look forward to our coming meetings and any ideas that you have, um, about things we should address. I have been in touch with Camden County because we've talked about the vegetation, the flowers that are along the side of the road. And now I'm trying to get through to the Department of Transportation at the state level because they paid for it, and to see if there's anything still available. But I talked to Camden about how they got hold of it and how they did it. Now I need to see if somebody at the state has time to communicate with me about that. So we're trying, and we're open for any new ideas you have. Um, thank you very much for your support over the years. And as a personal thing, I will just close by saying, I could not afford to live in the house I live in today. I bought it in 1991, and it's not just because I'm retired now either. I'm glad the value is much greater, but it's a little beach box, and the value that is placed on it, and I, I can't wait to see the newest numbers. I have not seen the new numbers, but it's, it's kind of ridiculous. But I'm so glad that we're addressing it. An excellent report. Thank you so much. Thank you all. Any questions?
Sue, thank you for all you do. You do a great job, and we thank you.
Thank you very much.
I, I really enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Any other committee reports?
None.
Commissioner's agenda, anything?
None of them, ma'am.
Move to Mayor's agenda. Um, Sue already touched on one of my big things, which is trash attack. Um, so just to reiterate, Saturday, April 5th, from 9:00 to noon at Aviation Park. Um, information is on the town's website, and you can register there. There's also information on the website about the poster contest, which the deadline for that is March 7th. And also, the town has the Valentine heart up at Aviation Park. Um, we think our buildings and ground staff has the biggest heart in North Carolina. They have installed this popular light of Valentine's heart, and we hope that everyone will take a stroll around it, around Frog Pond to check it out. Um, I have to say, my husband and I walk almost every single night at, between the hours of 8:00 and 9:00 o'clock, and we always walk by the pond. And it's really late, but there's always people out. There's always people, and it's so cool to see, even at that hour, people strolling or at the skate park, and, yeah, it's really cool. So special to, thank you to them for always making that area festive.
Will do, thank you, ma'am.
And moving on to Town Manager's Agenda.
Did you want to, um, address some resolutions?
Oh, yes. Yes, yes. Skipping.
Okay, yes.
We have some resolutions and proclamations, um, for you. You'll see number, under number one, we have the Resolution of Support for Legislation: Restoring Zoning Authority to Local Governments. Under B, we have Resolution of Support for Updating the 2016 Beach and Inlet Management Plan. C, Resolution for Support for Abandoned and Derelict Vessel Program in North Carolina. And D, Resolution of Appreciation and Support for the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Is there any other we, would you like to give? That's all, nothing else on this? Thank you very much. And, um, under A, I would like to say thank you to Bobby Hannig for, for putting that resolution. I hope it, I hope it gets the support that it, that it needs to get that, restoring that zoning authority to local governments. Um, and I would entertain a motion for these proclamations.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing under Town Manager's Agenda this evening, Mayor Bertin. We'll move to Town Attorney.
Mayor, nothing, thank you.
Consent Agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Um, we have the minutes from the January 13, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting, the December 2024 monthly report, budget amendments and transfers. We have budget amendment number six to allocate capital reserve funds for the engineering and the design of the West Martin Street and the sidewalk project as approved at the October 14th meeting. Um, number four is the public building for political meetings to add to the consolidation fee. We're requesting to add a $75 per-use fee to the budget consolidation fee. And then lastly, proclamations and resolutions, fiscal year 2425 reimbursement resolution declaring the intent to reimburse the cost of certain signatures. This is saying that we will repay the money that was loaned to us. Um, approval of the consent agenda will approve the fiscal year 2425 reimbursement, um, resolution. And staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented in a motion would be in order.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we'll move to our last public comment for the evening. Close that public comment, and.
Move to adjourn.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Hold on, Mayor Bertin.
Thank you.
Thank you.